Will you please take your seats and put your phones on silent? Welcome to the Hamilton County State of the County. We will now have an opening prayer by Minister Bomani Taiba from Corinthian Baptist Church.
I will bless the Lord at all times. His praise shall continually be in my mouth. My soul shall make its boast in the Lord. The humble shall hear of it and be glad. Oh, magnify the Lord with me, and let us exalt his name together. Let us bow. Oh, Lord, our Lord, how excellent is your name in all the earth! We thank you, God, for another day to praise and to worship you. We worship you for who you are. You are sovereign, omnipotent, omnipresent, and omniscient. As we gather here this evening, we ask that your blessing be upon us all. In particular, God, we lift up our county commissioners Stephanie Dumas, Denise Dreehouse, and President Alicia Reese. Give them wisdom to govern, make wise decisions, and may your spirit of peace overtake them in times of adversity. Keep your arms of protection over our citizens, this county, and all our local municipalities. In the matchless and majestic name of Jesus, we pray. Let us all say amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise and remain standing for the presentation of colors and remain standing for the singing of the National Anthem by recording artists and Cincinnati Black Music Walker Fame Performer P. Ann Everson Price.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early lights? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Of the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming? Had the rocket's red flag, had bombs burned steel in air? Yeah, through the night, but our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the brave? The brave, the brave, the brave?
Thank you. Please be seated.
The Honorable Alicia Reese made history as the first woman and African American to win city, state, and county offices in Hamilton County. She was also elected President of the Ohio Legislative Black Caucus and led the effort at the State of Ohio for the Infrastructure MLK Highway Exchange. After winning a historic county commission election during a global pandemic and a historic swearing-in on January 2021, she began helping the citizens of Hamilton County with bold and innovative ideas. Commissioner Alicia Reese formed the Hamilton County COVID Economic and Recovery Task Force, created a Relief-a-thon helping hundreds of citizens, and one of Commissioner Alicia Reese's most innovative ideas was the creation of the Hamilton County Equity and Resources Mobile Tech Bus, known as the One Stop 513 Relief Bus, which traveled along with Commissioner Reese to over seventy locations and twenty-nine different ZIP codes to connect over four thousand Hamilton County citizens to COVID vaccinations and economic assistance. But she didn't stop there. To better connect struggling small businesses to millions in grant assistance, Commissioner Reese hosted a Small Business Relief Day to help hundreds of small business owners. Commissioner Reese continues to be a champion for homeowners, leading the charge for making good on a longtime county thirty percent property tax rebate promise to homeowners for the 2022 tax year and leading the charge for the county's first $1 million Senior Citizen Fund to assist with utilities and home repairs. As the former Deputy Director of the Ohio Tourism Division, County Commissioner Alicia Reese has utilized her creative, marketing, and visionary skills to develop and transform what was once just rocks into the county's largest equity and tourism project on the Ohio banks, the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, an interactive, free, family-friendly technology tourist attraction celebrating the untold legacy of black musical artists, producers, and musicians from Hamilton County and southwest Ohio. This world-class attraction will open July 22, 2023. In addition, Commissioner Reese also formed a regional partnership with a historical display at the Greater Cincinnati Northern Kentucky Airport. Vision, action, results. One Hamilton County. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese.
I wanted to make sure that we start off with the right energy because we are One Hamilton County. I want to thank all of you for being here. I'll tell you, it has been a doozy to get to this point. Last night, yesterday, we spent all day wondering, should we keep it? Should we cancel? Should we change the date? Is it gonna be snow? Is it not gonna be snow? And we said, finally, we're gonna move forward. I want to thank Nick Crossley. We're lucky to have our own EMA that can tell us what's going on. And we made a decision, and we put it in God's hands, and we didn't have the snow that we thought we were supposed to have. We made it here today. One Hamilton County. And I'd like to think that all the technology worked, but it didn't. We had some adjustments, but that's what life is about, and that's what makes Hamilton County tough. Our citizens are able to change based on the challenges. We're able to change as a board of commission based on your challenges. Our administration's able to change based on your challenges. We have been through hell, but we are still here, Hamilton County. So I want to thank all of you who took your time out to come today to hear about the direction of our county. Let me say, before I get to the meat of things, I have to always put things into context because I always believe all the things that happened in my life are due to blessings. And just a block behind us, my late mother, who ended up fighting breast cancer for twelve years and passed away, came out of the projects of the Westin. And who would have thought, one block over, that her legacy and her daughter would be standing here as your president of the Hamilton County Commission? And I don't take that lightly. I'm extremely proud to represent the citizens of Hamilton County. I want to thank the voters. You're the reason that I'm here. I want to thank my Reese team who's here. A lot of you are here, the audience. Thank you so much for being here. And I want to thank all of the voters of Hamilton County that saw fit for me to be here as your county commission. I want to thank our county color guard. I want to thank Sheriff McGuffey for bringing them and having them here to be a part of this One Hamilton County. I call it a One Hamilton County celebration versus a state of the county. I want to thank, didn't her voice sound beautiful? I heard it all the way in the back. P. Ann Everson Price. And I want to thank Minister Bomani from Corinthian Baptist Church for leading us in prayer today. The teleprompter's trying to keep up with me because I'm all off script. But I also want to thank my father, who is here, Dr. Stephen Reese, and my sister representing my family. Thank you so much for being here and always being with me. In 2023, we live in extraordinary yet exciting times. I am happy and proud to be the president of the Hamilton County Commission, and today I share that Hamilton County, the condition of Hamilton County, has never been stronger, has never been more inclusive, has never had this kind of money in the savings before. We are strong in Hamilton County. And we're ready to take action. Our goal is to be the number-one county in America, to live, work, and visit. But we can only do this by working together. Our motto will be "One Hamilton County," where all citizens can afford to live here, raise a family here, relocate here, open a small business here, grow here, retire here, and thrive here. I want to be absolutely clear that our number-one priority are the citizens of Hamilton County first. In about twenty years of public service, my goal has always been to work and fight for everyone to have an equal shot at the American dream, and that has not changed. In fact, I'm doubling down. But we can only accomplish this through the partnerships as One Hamilton County. With that, I would like to introduce my colleagues, my partner, our team, One Hamilton County, our Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to introduce Vice President, Hamilton County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse. I'd like to introduce our county commissioner, Stephanie Summerall-Dumas. Thanks to the voters of Hamilton County, not only is our board the first all-female elected commission in Hamilton County's history, but we're bold, we're strong, we're taking action, and we're fighting for the citizens of Hamilton County every day. But like I said, we can't do it alone. We are here tonight thanks to our extraordinary county employees and our administration led by County Administrator Jeff Aludo. Will our employees and Jeff Aludo please stand? I also want to recognize my Chief of Staff. I'm incredibly proud of him. We've had to overcome a lot of things, and as a young man, he's able to do it. Quentin Monroe, who is with us. And my Policy and Outreach Director, Veda Stevens, is here. I also want to thank the Hamilton County Memorial Hall staff. Thank you so much and prestige, everybody, for putting this together. Let's give them a big round of applause for hosting us. I also want to acknowledge Bridget Daughtry, who was our Communications Director, who helped us put this together as well. Where's Bridget? She's always hiding somewhere. And the one person that works directly for the board, our clerk, Leslie Hervey. One Hamilton County requires collaboration, and we can't do that without our county executive office holders. Many are here today, and I'd like to introduce them and have them stand and be recognized. Our sheriff, Sheriff McGuffey. Our recorder, Scott Crowley. Our coroner, Lashki Samarko. Our auditor, Dusty Rhodes, and auditor-elect Bridget Kelly. Our treasurer, Jill Schiller. Our clerk of courts, Pavan Parikh. Our prosecutor, Melissa Powers. And our engineer, Eric Beck. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. And we gotta keep moving with the teleprompter. Well, I have to go from notes. In addition, it's very important that we have all of our forty-nine municipalities, and I'm excited that we have some of them here today. We have our mayors, we have our council people, we have our school board members, we have our state representatives. I'd like to acknowledge Mayor Abthab Purival, City of Cincinnati. Forest Park Mayor Aaron Brown. Village of Lincoln Heights Mayor Ruby Mumfree. Woodland Mayor Brian Poole. Silverton Mayor John Smith. Will all trustees, school board members, mayors, local officials, and state representatives please stand to be recognized? One Hamilton County means all of us working together, but we can't do that without our judges. I'd like for all of our judges that are here today to please stand. I think they had a conference, but I wanted to make sure because they'll get on me if they didn't get recognized. So you all tell them they weren't recognized. And I want to announce that tonight I will be creating my president's One Hamilton County Roundtable to meet quarterly with elected officials countywide on a quarterly basis on ways that we can move our county forward, and we're excited to get that off the ground. When you entered Hamilton County Memorial Hall this evening, you were greeted by some very sharp women and young ladies as hostesses. They are our Commission of Women and Girls, which was founded by Vice President Denise Dreehouse and led by Mary Mari. As a result of our Commission of Women and Girls, we now have equal pay for women at Hamilton County and at private and nonprofit businesses and organizations, and we have free period products in government buildings and other buildings to come. Please, recognized by having them stand, our Women and Girls Commission and Mary Mari. Thank you for your volunteerism. On January 5, 2023, I was honored to be elected as President of the Hamilton County Commission. As we enter this new year, we are wasting no time to take action to support the citizens of Hamilton County. Our One Hamilton County budget, as I said, is structurally bounded and is one of the most inclusive budgets in Hamilton County's history, addressing many of the challenges of our citizens who are facing major decisions. We've made major investments in the future of Hamilton County while helping people right now. In the past, far too many everyday citizens have been unaware of the important role that the county plays, our initiatives, our services, and the opportunities that we have available. That stops today. We will make sure that the Hamilton County brand will launch an aggressive outreach campaign called One Hamilton County to better promote, educate, and connect our citizens to the resources that are available. This administration will make, this administration will continue to connect our citizens and make them more aware of these resources through a multifaceted marketing campaign, building on the 513relief.com portal, which has already reached over two hundred thousand visitors. We will have a text and messaging program and our groundbreaking 513 Relief Bus that we piloted in 2021 and went to over seventy locations countywide in twenty-nine different ZIP codes from Cincinnati to Norwood to Harrison and every place in between with a partnership with UC Health, Hamilton County Board of Health, and our Department of Jobs and Family Services. This was successful. Let's take a look.
Hamilton County Commissioners launched the 513 Relief Bus this summer to deliver social services, including the vaccines, to those who need it most at no cost. The bus not only provides vaccines, but offers food, rent, and utility assistance, childcare and more, as it travels to different communities each week.
Okay, well, we're here live in Verbon Hill, Dayton, and it's just, the turnout's been incredible. It shows that people really do need the help, and that's what we're doing with the 513 Relief Bus. We're bringing the resources to the community in a one-stop way. You want to get back to normal, just like everybody else. Safe as Ray is the vaccine. So we have a one-stop 513 Relief Bus where we actually bring Hamilton County to the community. We bring the vaccination. At the same time, we also bring the economic resources, rental assistance, mortgage assistance, childcare services. We're bringing all of that at one time. After traveling myself to over seventy of the stops on the bus and talking with citizens countywide on the success and the need for something like this on a permanent basis, I am pleased to announce today that we will have a new, permanent, state-of-the-art, Hamilton County Equity and Resources Mobile Tech Bus that will expand and diversify our services known as the 513 Relief Bus. And we're wasting no time helping our citizens. We are launching it tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at Corinthian Baptist Church, starting then to help more people. You may have seen the 513 Relief Bus outside on your way in here, but take a look at our new permanent bus. Hello, I'm Alicia Reese, President of the Hamilton County Commission. This 513 Relief Bus will be multifaceted. We'll be able to still, yes, give the COVID vaccine, but we'll also be able to take your blood pressure checks. We'll be able to do cancer screenings, diabetes screenings. We'll be able to do dental care, be able to bring a number of services right to the people as they're needed.
Well, first of all, I want to say congratulations to Commissioner Reese, I should say President Reese, for bringing this to fruition.
Good afternoon. I'm Stephanie Summerall-Dumas, Hamilton County Commissioner. Everything that you would want in a 513 Relief Bus for services for you through Hamilton County are available on this bus.
I had a young lady who had lost her son to gun violence. Well, I ran across the 513 Bus, and the young lady went in there, and they helped her out. They gave her hope again, and it was good to know that it was an agency like the 513 Bus that's not going to make you jump over loops, over three fences in order to give you some help.
All right, we hope to see everybody tomorrow at Corinthian Baptist Church. I think that's QR codes, so, you know, we're all about the technology. We hope to see you there. Thank you. But I have to recognize some people who I didn't do it alone. We went from an idea to action, and I want to recognize Cincinnati NAACP President Joe Mallory and Bishop Brian Walker, who hosted the first press conference in front of Walker Funeral Home, who said, "We need the bus. Too many people are dying." I also want to thank Hampton University for the prototype and welcoming me to fly down there and learn about what they're doing and how we can expand it here. I would like to also recognize Ayesha Howard and Trevina Adams, if they will stand, who will be running the 513 Relief Bus program, and they have been working very hard. They might be still working. They're downstairs, still working, so give them a big round of applause. And we encourage people to go to 513relief.com or dot org, 513relief.org, to find the full schedule because we're coming to a municipality and a community near you. Now, we're not just going mobile. We are really working to make sure that we are accessible, that Hamilton County services are accessible and are reaching the people. And we were very pleased to put in this year's budget and announce that we will have the first-ever satellite office in Forest Park with the leadership of Commissioner Stephanie Summerall-Dumas and Mayor Brown. We on our way. Forest Park, we're on the way. To better connect people to the northern part of our county. Now, affordable Now, affordable housing, we've heard a lot of talk about it. It's a major challenge in our county. We have over 40,000 housing units that we need for affordable housing. And so our board had to make a serious choice to not just talk about it, but be about it. We had a lot of choices for our American Rescue federal funding, but we decided that our top priority is for someone to be able to have a place to live and be able to afford to live there. And so we have taken a bold step with the largest investment that I'm aware of to date in affordable housing, $40 million. In our effort to close the gap in Hamilton County, this investment is multifaceted. We want to help build new affordable housing, help with seniors and reentry and housing for disabled citizens. We also have funding in there to help people stay in the house they have right now through our Mortgage Assistance Program that will also help with property tax delinquency that we're working with our Treasurer's Office on. We also put $1 million last year and now another million dollars to make sure senior citizens are not left behind, to help them with repairs and utility bills. We understand that affordable is multifaceted. In addition to that, a year, for the 2022 tax season, we were able to keep the promise of 30% tax rebate that was promised to the citizens with the stadium deal. I'm going to keep pushing for that next year, but we were able to get that done. And I want to thank my colleagues who unanimously voted to make that happen. They deserve a round of applause. I don't let the teleprompter, I ran on off with the teleprompter, now it's coming back. Economic development is critical. We have been very intentional. We have been very strategic in understanding that we have an aging infrastructure throughout Hamilton County. Many of our smaller municipalities have struggled with road repairs and aging infrastructure. But I want to be clear, when we say economic development, we're talking about all 49 municipalities, whether you're a village, whether you're a township, whether you're a small city. We want to make sure, under our administration, that you are not left behind. We have developed a big grant for small communities. We've got small grants for small communities. We got CDBG dollars. We put our CDBG dollars as well as general fund dollars because we believe that this is important. And the evidence remains that we've been able to help communities like Lincoln Heights, Silverton, Cheviot, Anderson Township, and more. And more is on the way. I want to be clear as your president that you will not be left behind. This grant program that was one of the initiatives of Vice President Denise Dreehouse has worked. We've expanded it, and we want to make sure that we have One Hamilton County that is healthy, the infrastructure is up, and investment is in those communities. So we wanted to make sure, as we talk about One Hamilton County, that this is just the beginning. More help is on the way. Small businesses are the backbone of the future of Hamilton County. More small businesses are starting up around the country than ever before. During COVID, it was a very tough time for small businesses. Our commission, we rolled up our sleeves, and we stepped out and made a major commitment and kept so many businesses open. Over 700 businesses, we were able to help keep the doors open and servicing our citizens. If you clap for that, I know you'll clap for this. $11 million in grant funding for small businesses. And I was blessed to host a drive-through, because it was COVID, couldn't go inside, a drive-through event at the Greater Cincinnati Urban League along with our partner Alloy. We were able for people to drive up, sit down, teach them how to fill out the application, answer the questions that they needed to be answered, and that was successful in helping over 500 businesses. At this time, I'd like to have Alloy, and if there's a representative from the Greater Cincinnati Urban League, please stand for a successful program. Thank you for stepping up. Thank you. But our board said, "That's good. We helped them temporarily, but that's not enough." We understand that for the future of One Hamilton County, where people will want to come here and open their businesses and grow their businesses, we must have, what I'm about to announce, the first-ever Office of Small Business in Hamilton County's history to continue to help small businesses grow, develop, and move our county forward. So we're excited about that. We're done with small businesses. You can move on up. But one point I did want to make is that as the president, I'm going to be reaching out to have quarterly meetings collectively with the Greater Cincinnati Chamber of Commerce, but all the chambers of commerce throughout Hamilton County, the Rotary Clubs, the professional industry organizations. They will work with us to help make sure that our small business office is on, is hitting the mark, because I believe in ROIs, and we want to make sure we have a good return on your investment. So we're looking forward to that. Transportation and workforce go hand in hand. The voters passed Issue 7, which has created jobs and opportunities through SORTA to fix aging and crumbling roads, as well as expand and create new routes. We are partnering with the city, SORTA, the county engineer, to finally fix and rebuild the Western Hills Viaduct. It's no longer just a press conference. As someone like myself who spent my youth growing up on the West Side and Vice President Dreehouse, who grew up on the West Side, we both know firsthand how huge and important the Western Hills Viaduct is to transportation in our county for One Hamilton County. And we're excited about that. In addition, we are pleased to have joined, all three of us, to have joined President Joe Biden at a press conference, I believe, two weeks ago, announcing, I didn't think I would ever live to see it, $1.6 billion to replace the Brent Spence Bridge project. And we're going to be working with the city under the mayor of ABTAP, Pierball, to get this thing done right. That's huge for our region. In fact, it's revolutionary. And SORTA makes announcements to enhance and increase with state-of-the-art services and expansion, which we believe is certainly important. I pledge today to work with SORTA to make sure, as we make those expansions, that we don't leave behind the basic services where people have depended on SORTA for many, many years. Our elderly who are struggling and our struggling citizens who are trying to get to the grocery store, trying to get to jobs, and our youth who are trying to get to education. I look forward to working with Darrell and his team to make sure that progress doesn't leave anyone behind because transportation is the great equalizer and is critical to One Hamilton County. Thank you. Now, safety is important for us to have One Hamilton County. We can't have One Hamilton County without safety, and our commission board knows that. But we also know it's important that we reduce gun violence. And we have to work together to do that. Our elected Hamilton County Sheriff Charmaine McGuffey is a leader in the county as it relates to keeping our county safe. Sheriff McGuffey has presented bold and new recommendations that are critical to keeping our county safe. We listened to Sheriff McGuffey when she brought her budget to us and said, "We need $24 million in funding to fix the locks, the elevator in the jail, and to increase over 100 new beds." Let me say, Sheriff, we're with you, and we're going to get it done, and we've already funded it, so I want y'all to know that. Stand up, Sheriff. Thank you for your leadership. Now, the opioid crisis did not go away when COVID showed up. In fact, it got even worse in some cases. But our board is meeting this challenge head-on, and we're going to fight to save our citizens from the opioid crisis. We joined the lawsuit that the state put up, and I'm here to report that we have a settlement. $32 million will be coming to Hamilton County because of the settlement and the leadership and us standing up and the citizens, and everyone's saying we have to sue these drugmakers. But the question is, now that the $32 million will be released, we have to be prepared. And so now I'm here to announce that we have a new nonprofit called One Ohio comprised of faith leaders, small business owners, medical experts, the coroner, and those who have lived experience, along with our Board of Commissioners who are on that board. Now, these dollars will go to prevention and treatment to reduce the opioid usage and overdose in our county. While I will serve as Chair of that board, our Vice President Denise Dreehouse will represent us on the State Board in Columbus, and you know she's going to fight. We are taking addiction and recovery, and we're meeting it head-on. That's not the only thing we're doing is the $32 million. I'm very pleased to announce today the first-ever Office of Addiction Response. Let me repeat that. The first-ever Office of Addiction Response, led by our Director Megan Gosney. Is Megan here? She might be downstairs. All our people are working double shifts. And I want to recognize Judge Nicole Sanders, I don't think she could be with us today. I think they had a training, who is over the Drug Treatment and Recovery Court for her leadership in helping us to secure $2.7 million additional dollars for the first time in history. That deserves a round of applause. Now, to do all this, we have to have a good workforce. And we understand that we have to be competitive, just like everyone else, and we want people to hire people who are the best to represent us. And so we made some changes here. We have paid family leave if you come work for us. We have tuition reimbursement if you come work for us. We have also an intern, a dynamic internship program paid that's getting ready to start. We've got a fellowship program for the first time in history that's getting ready to be rolled out. If you want to come and work with the best, for the best, to help us be the best, I'm asking you to join us and be an employee of Hamilton County. One Hamilton County requires us to think different and do things different. For decades, too many citizens have been left behind in contracts, employment, and development. Our commission board has been intentional, unapologetic, and bold in working to change the trajectory. We have completed the county's first-ever disparity study. The administration has awarded the first-ever municipal bond contract to a black-owned firm, Loop Capital, and the refinancing helped save taxpayers' money. We are diversifying our appointments to our boards and commissions, appointing the first African-Americans to the Public Defender Board, the first African-American Latina woman to the Port Authority, and we appointed the first African-American Director of Jobs and Family Services. Director Michael Patton, would you please stand? We also have a Department of Inclusion and Equity led by Director Robert Bell. Will you please stand? As president, I am proud to announce Hamilton County's largest equity inclusion project on the Ohio banks, the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. This state-of-the-art, this state-of-the-art, technology-friendly, international tourism attraction located across from Paycor Stadium or PBS Stadium and next to the Andrew Brady Music Center will create a music corridor on the banks honoring the untold story of black artists, musicians, songwriters, right from here who have impacted music across the world. Let's take a look.
Welcome. I'm Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese and founder of the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. Join me for a tour of our newest tourist attraction. The Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame is an interactive outdoor technology park celebrating and capturing the stories of musical artists, groups, songwriters, and producers from Southwest Ohio who have made a major impact in music around the world. Let's take a look. When you come to the entrance of the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, you'll see a spectacular gateway to welcome people as they enter. You will be able to use your smartphone devices to connect with our 13 informational kiosks and QR codes to capture and share the amazing stories of our black artists and their music. Can you feel the music? Well, if you can't, we'll help you. We will have pulse drums that will illuminate in a sequence to a beat with the audio. If you keep the beat, you can receive a light show from the adjacent fountain. Everyone loves to take selfies and photos. We have a 3D sculpture that is perfect for taking your pictures and sharing your experience on social media. What is a walk of fame without a dance party for the entire family? This area will feature light and sound towers that will have the moving searchlights above it, and you will be able to dance the night away. The party won't stop there. Now we step into the future through technology. We have this dance party continuing with augmented reality features in this area that will allow you to see yourself and show people your dance moves. The augmented reality continues by letting you sing and perform virtually with some of your favorite inductees. Come check out our world-class family tourism attraction, featuring our inductees Bootsy Collins, Penny Ford, the Isley Brothers, Midnight Star, Otis Williams, High Tech, Wilbert Longmire, Dr. Charles Foad, and more. The Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame will house over 200 stars with new inductees each year. Can you feel the excitement? We'll see you soon.
The Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame will be the number-one black music attraction in the country. One Hamilton County. I also want to acknowledge, this takes a lot of work. It's a lot of technology, it's infrastructure, it's construction, it's designs, because I told them, "Bring me Disney World," without Disney World's cost. And they did just that. Let me say that this is a critical project on the banks. It's critical where it's located, right across where African-Americans swam, our ancestors to freedom. Many lived on the banks. They were run off the banks. It wasn't called that then. It was Buck Town and other places. And to have this between two of our county-owned stadiums, Major League Baseball and NFL Football, and connected to a state-of-the-art new Andrew Brady Music Center is critical. and connected to a state-of-the-art new Andrew Brady Music Center is critical. It's only half an acre, but through technology will expand the platform. It will connect the past to the future. It'll be a place for grandma and your grandkids that will come and be able to participate and learn, but do it in a fun way. It's a way for us to recapture our culture, but at the same time, create a tourism attraction where people will come 365 days to this free location and explore. Already, we've gained national attention and free media for Hamilton County and Cincinnati. It will induct inductees every year, and those inductees will come from Cincinnati, Hamilton County, and southwest Ohio. Just had a meeting with the new Director of Tourism for the whole state of Ohio and gave him a walkthrough, and he said, "Oh, my God, I didn't know y'all had this down here." They got a Rock and Roll Hall of Fame up north, we got the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame down south. To put that together, I want to acknowledge Phil Beck, who is our Project Manager for the county. Phil is here. He's gotta manage all these pieces, and I'd like for our design team, construction team, I see J.R.A. is here, I don't know if anybody else can stand up so they see you. These are the ones that are designing it, making all this technology work, and they're working real hard down there with Messer Construction and THP and DNK, and did I leave anybody? I probably Trivium, so this is top-notch. One thing about our Board of County Commissioners, Vice President Dreehouse, President Reese, and Commissioner Dumis, if it's not class, if it's not quality, we don't do it because we want the best for our citizens of Hamilton County. I want to thank you all. So mark your calendars, July 22nd, you don't want to miss it. And today, I'll give you a sneak peek. I want to also thank the committee, volunteer committee led by Lincoln Ware. I know he was here earlier, I don't know if he's still here, but if there's any committee members, please stand and be recognized at this time. Thank you very much. Give them a round of applause. So I'm gonna get in trouble, but I'm gonna give, since y'all came out in the snow and everything, I want to give you something to leave with. One person, I'll give you, that's going to be in the Black Music Walk of Fame this year, Louise Sharpshire, the original writer of We Shall Overcome, right here from our city, from our county, we're taking our history back. Now, we also know that having a safe environment is also critical to One Hamilton County. We sign on with the state organization that deals with how to increase an environment-friendly county, city, and government. But I'm here to say as the President of the Hamilton County Commission, one of the biggest environmental issues that we have going in Hamilton County is the gun range that the babies and the children hear every day and night in Lincoln Heights and Evendale, Woodlawn, that's an environmental injustice. As a result, thanks to our administrator who went back and found the money, we are putting the largest investment on the table, $15 million to get this thing moving. Now, we understand that the Cincinnati Police has to find a place to go, and so I want to thank both of my Commissioners, Dreehouse, Dumis, who have been working on this for some time. I was working on it as a state rep, but this is the closest we ever came. We never had any money. So we got $15 million. United States Senator Sherrod Brown on Monday is gonna announce some money. We're almost there. We got drawings. We worked with our sheriff and the former police chief, and they got the drawings. We got the location, Corrane Township, we worked with the trustees there. As President, Mayor, I need you. Lincoln Heights, Cincinnati, Woodlawn, One Hamilton County, let's get it done. And let me tell you, with the people that we have and the bright minds, I believe we will get it done. I know we will, because we know how to work together, city, county, state, federal government. Now, tourism is important to economic development. It's critical to our One Hamilton County plan. We're losing out on conventions every day because we don't have adequate room nights. Now, as a former Deputy of Tourism for the state of Ohio, as someone who has worked with the city, when I was the Vice Mayor, to bring major conventions here in the toughest of times, I understand what meeting planners need, want, and must have. One of the critical things that we have to do is bring in outside money so we can keep the costs down on the local folks that live here. The more we bring from the outside, the less your costs. So we want to be the number-one tourism destination, but we cannot do that until we have a convention hotel. As President, I'm announcing today that we will work as hard as we can to roll up our sleeves to deliver an 800-room convention hotel in partnership with 3CDC and others. We must have a convention hotel. In sports, in tourism, we also look at what other things are we missing out on? Hamilton County is a winning county. We've got teams winning every day, from FC Cincinnati going to the playoffs, to UC Football, national attention, to UC and Xavier Basketball, getting ready for March Madness, to us looking forward to Opening Day every single year, the biggest Opening Day Parade in the country, and to our own Hootie Bengals. Last year, I told you we're going to the Super Bowl. This year, I'm telling you, we're gonna win the Super Bowl. And we're excited. Now, people ask me about the stadium and all of that. I'm here to tell you, we got to handle business on the field right now. We got a Super Bowl to win. After we win the Super Bowl, then we'll sit down and we will come together for a win, both for the Bengals, but also a win for the taxpayers of Hamilton County. But we got a Super Bowl to win right now. With that being said, our winning tradition in sports does not stop at professional or college sports. We have some of the best high school teams in the country. We're winning state championships. We are going to winning division championships. Many of our players have been crowned as the high school All-Americans, have gone on to get scholarships and are playing at the collegiate and the professional level. We have people winning in everything from baseball, soccer, basketball, rugby, volleyball, gymnastics, cheerleading, tennis, and the list goes on. But what we're missing out on is a $91 billion industry called youth amateur sports. We do not have a state-of-the-art, comprehensive, youth amateur sports facility. Why do we want the facility? Because we want to showcase our kids. At the same time, we want to book these hotels, and we want a piece of the $91 billion. As a result, I'm announcing tonight that in our budget, we put funding to seriously look at throughout our county, all over the county, to see what could help and where we could put, and how we could do it, and how we could get public and private partnerships to do it, to get a piece of the $91 billion. We're not in the tourism game if we're not in the youth amateur sports game. They've got a tournament every weekend. They don't have to wait on the Super Bowl. They've got tournaments every single weekend that can fill our hotels quickly. With that, I'm announcing the establishment of a state-of-the-art, comprehensive sports tourism facility committee. It's already in the budget. This committee will be comprised of the Port Authority, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and youth advocates to start immediately on how we can get a piece of the $91 billion. In addition to youth, we're excited to also announce that we're opening our first-ever Hamilton County Office of Youth. We will connect youth to jobs, we will connect them to internships, we will connect them, we will connect also organizations to grants that help youth with youth activities. I want to recognize Commissioner Dumis, we're leading this effort. She said, "I want grants, but if you're helping with cheerleaders, we want to help you. If you're helping doing something positive for youth and exposing them, we want to help you." We want our program to get to the youth before the streets get to the youth, and we're gonna Now, last but not least, your health is your wealth. We learned this when COVID-19 shut down America. We've lost too many people, not only to COVID-19, but also to cancer. President Joe Biden has indicated that he has a cancer initiative to help fight this terrible disease. It's hitting everybody, doesn't care what your race is, what your age is, what party you belong to, what your finances, how much money you have in the bank. Cancer is an equal opportunity killer. And this is one thing Hamilton County can come together as One Hamilton County. I'm proposing today the start of a cancer caucus to better position us, prepare us, so that we could get more money for research and be able to have a report on how we're doing as it relates to cancer. From my understanding, the cancer rates are going up in Hamilton County. We want to bring the brightest of minds together, get the resources to report that the cancer rates are going down. If we can get a vaccination for COVID, we can find something to stop this cancer. And our involvement and help doesn't just stop there. Do you know that we're one of the top funders of health in this county? Through the taxpayers of Hamilton County and the Intergent Care Levy, we make sure that no one is turned away. You get the top care because our community, our county, understands that your health is your wealth. So we're gonna become more involved, not just passing the money over, but being involved on these different issues as it relates to health. Now, I will end my speech with this story and why health is so important. On January 2nd, we were all excited for a major football showdown. It was the showdown. People who couldn't get in was upset that they didn't get in. We had good weather, they'd built it up, all over the TV, our team was ready to play, and something happened that woke us up to understand that it's bigger than a football game. DeMar Hamlin went down from an opposite team that wasn't even wearing our uniform. Over 60,000 people in the stadium came to silence as this player flatlined in front of our eyes. The first responders got busy. They didn't ask, "What team are you on? What color you are? How much money you got in the bank? What political party are you with?" They went to saving a life. We watched it, and then we all broke down to our knees praying to a higher power because we didn't have the power. No one moved, not one sound. And then, as he was rushed to the hospital, Bingo and Bills fans went to following and got there with prayer visuals, people hugging, all races hugging, mothers. Folks didn't even know each other, hugging and praying. But when they pulled up, they pulled up into the number-one trauma center in America. And they handed him over, and our trauma center went to work. Our trauma center went to work. We left the jungle and went to the hospital, and we had the technology. They said, "If we didn't have the technology, if he laid down, he'd die. He'd go forward, he'd die." We had some technology we never heard of. But what I love about us is no matter if it was DeMar Hamlin or Joe Blow, when you walk into UC Health because of our Intergent Levy, you get number-one care. That's One Hamilton County, and we reached out to the Bills. We made them feel at home, we worked with them. That's what One Hamilton County is about. The world was looking at Hamilton County, and we showed them what we have. So at this time, I'd like to present the first-ever Hamilton County Presidents Award to the UC Medical Number-One Trauma Center in America. I would like to ask my colleagues, Vice President Dreehouse, Commissioner Dumis, please join And I'm gonna read the names, I don't know if I get them right. Amy, Dr. Amy Mackley, RN Jennifer Lemonnick, RN Elizabeth Kramer, PT Holly Cameron, pharmacist, was this a pharmacy? Okay, my pharmacist got it right medicine. Christopher Drogey, I don't have my glasses, so I'm trying to be cute. Brittany Holmes, RT, RN Elizabeth Narimore, RN Kylie Hamm, RN Shelley Gordon, Terry Here they go. If anything happened, take me to UC Medical Center. This is what it's all about. One Hamilton County. There may be things that we didn't expect to come toward us. We're gonna shift, we're gonna make it work, but we're gonna stand up for the citizens of Hamilton County. If you don't remember anything else from this message, the message is the people of Hamilton County are first. The people of Hamilton County are first. Everybody see them over here? And you can't break our soul.